Came here in 1986 to run it for myself in October. I signed the papers when I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and, more importantly, can resonate with people and actually to some extent, help people. That's pretty rewarding. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
Okay. Call this meeting to order. First order of business, public announcements. We have none. Our second order of business is a public hearing. I'll call this public meeting to open this public hearing. Public hearing to hear public comments on the request from Central Main ATV Club to establish an ATV access route along local roads to include Davis Road, Gagnon Road, Martin Stream Road, Six Rod Road, and Ten Lots Road. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time at this public hearing? Seeing none, declare this public hearing closed. Our third order of business is public comments, limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is on the meeting agenda when the item is addressed. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak to the council? On the CATV? Okay.
So Laura from CATV?
Mark, do you wish to speak? Is there on a specific item?
Not on the agenda, no.
Not on the agenda? Okay.
My name is Mark Antamala. I live at 16 High Street here in Fairfield. Does the council know of any investigation going on with Ayla Reynolds at Fairfield Police Department?
No. No.
I told Shannon Flogge that Ayla Reynolds was alive.
Okay.
I dialed 911 some days ago back to report it, and the dispatcher told me that I was misusing 911 to report Ayla Reynolds alive. So he sent a couple offices to my home. Shannon Flogge was one of them. I don't know who the other one is. I've seen him, I just don't know his name. She had a camera, so she looked at me straight on. And I told her, her failure to act is, well, that's just, that's unbecoming of an officer.
Okay.
She didn't even ask any questions. Like most of you, there's no one here in shock, and that's shocking.
We wouldn't be privy to investigations, Mark. They would not share that information with us?
Do you know that I called the main state police some time ago before Justice Joseph Mazzati declared Ayla Reynolds deceased based on the false evidence that Jeff Love testified to him about? Jeff lied, Love did, and he's the detective on the case. He lied in front of the justice. When I called the main state police, their headquarters in Augusta, no one even knew who was working on that case.
Okay.
No one knew who the detective was on the case, or whether the case was even a cold case or not. So they transferred me over to the dispatch center, and she told me it was a cold case. And I said, "It can't be a cold case." Just two weeks prior to that, an article ran in the morning Sentinel newspaper saying that it wasn't a cold case. Trista Reynolds no longer will take any information on her daughter, Ayla Reynolds. As a matter of fact, I tried to give her some. And I got that's my trouble, a trespass notice, not to contact Trista Reynolds anymore.
Okay.
So she has three lawyers.
Can you wrap this up, Mark?
You're not interested. That's shocking.
Okay.
It's terribly shocking and very telling.
Mark, ongoing investigations, they are not going to share that information with us? It's not information that we would be...
You just said there was none.
Pardon?
You just said there was no ongoing investigation.
I did not say that. I said, "They're not going to share any information with us whether there is or is not an investigation."
You're taking my valuable time I have to speak.
Which you have, which has elapsed.
Well, thank you. I had three minutes. That hasn't gone by that fast, has it?
Yes, it has.
Can I have three more minutes?
Nope.
I'd like to tell you more about Ayla Reynolds being alive.
No, sir. You have your, if you would like to submit a letter to the council regarding this, we would be more than happy to entertain a letter from you.
This is the state's longest missing case history. You don't care about it?
I'm not sure how that pertains to the town of Fairfield.
Chairman, can I make a suggestion? Actually, if it's an ongoing investigation as, or isn't, shouldn't it be taken up with the chief of police here in Fairfield instead of the town council?
Well, that'd be all fine and dandy, but it's no longer an ongoing investigation.
We aren't investigating...
She's deceased!
We aren't investigating...
Declared by a judge. There is no more investigation.
Excuse me?
Point of order.
You're out of order.
What is it folks don't understand?
Point of order.
She is alive!
You're out of order.
I talked to her!
You're out of order.
Folks, Mark, if it is something to pertain to the council, I'm willing to entertain it. If it's something that you can put into a letter to send to the council for us to look at, I'd be more than happy to look at it. Your three minutes has elapsed. I appreciate you coming in and sharing this information. But we only have so much time in an evening. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Okay. I believe we're moving on to our fourth order of business. Town manager report.
So last Thursday, I attended the First Park General Assembly meeting. It's the first meeting in the process. Next month's meeting on March 22nd is the meeting that is open to every voting resident of the town Fairfield to vote on the First Park operating budget for the 18, 19 fiscal year. This week, we had, the children's program at the library has provided the town office with some lucky shamrocks that we have on display in our lobby. So these guys, these little guys, they know exactly what they're lucky for, everything from family and friends, and most of them are lucky for their moms. So they're cute. And then also, unhappily reporting that we currently have two fire trucks that have been taken out of service. The town does currently have adequate coverage should there be a need, and we're working on that process, and there'll be more information to come. But just don't, don't be surprised if you see the ladder truck at a vehicle accident. So, just saying.
Could be a tall vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. Might have to happen.
Do we have any committee reports this evening? No.
No, everyone Community Development Committee has...
Did not, that's correct. Okay, thank you. All right, our fifth order of business. To waive the reading of and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting number 2018-03, held on February 14th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained. One abstained. Our sixth order of business is the treasurer's warrant. To approve the treasurer's warrant, 51 and LT1, in the amount of $156,361.19.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, our seventh order of business, to take action on the following items of business. Item number 18-14, order that the town council hereby approves a request from Central Main ATV Club to establish an ATV access route along local roads to include Davis Road, Gagnon Road, Martin Stream Road, Six Rod Road, and Ten Lots Road.
I would say I move that we table item 1814 to the next regular meeting of the town council.
I think here? To talk on it?
No, they are not here this evening.
I would say, making this motion based on the recommendation that we review the speed limits as indicated in Chief Gould's memo, that would require potentially amending an existing town ordinance, which we can't do tonight. So we would need to consider this at a later date in order to make those changes.
I second that, no.
We have a motion in a second to table this until our next regular meeting.
Yeah, we've got two letters here.
Yes.
Yeah, I went over those early, till March 14th. Is that the date we're talking about? For this? Yeah, okay.
All those in favor? Item 18-15, order that the town council hereby signs quick claim deeds for the following properties. 24 Pool and Lane, map 015, lot 58-02, and 15 Maltcom Street, map 24, lot 094, and 241 Martin Stream Road, map 10, lot 1404.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to sign a quick claim deeds. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Item 18-16, order that the town council hereby considers an appointment application to the Economic and Community Development Committee from Allison Carter.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Who is Allison Carter?
She is the resident at Los Oaxos on Parker Avenue. Her equipment application is in your packets. She actually has attended the last two or three economic community development meetings. She made contact with me towards mid-fall last year, wanted to get involved, wanted to do something in the community to help boost economic development. Basically, she is a realtor.
She's a real estate broker.
And wanted to basically help try to enhance quality of place.
Yeah. I've known her for a number of years, and a very, very good lady, hard worker.
Yeah, so she's been a good asset to the committee, and our committee doesn't have a particular set of numbers, so anytime we can get folks who want to volunteer their time, it's always a good thing to have, so.
Start with me.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? Item 18-17, order that the town council hereby authorizes the town treasurer to advertise the sale of tax-acquired property through the competitive bid process.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me?
Glad to see it's a very short list.
Yes.
What is the property?
One is a vacant motorhome in a park, and another one does have a tenant, but it's not the property owner, but we are in communication with them and working with them.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Item 18-18, order that the town council hereby approves the proposed Town of Fairfield facade improvement and marketing assistance program with the 2018, 2019 funding in the amount of $30,000 from the industrial park and natural gas TIF.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just say, I'm very glad to see the program in eligibility section having been clarified to make clear that residences, or residents who run businesses from their residences are not going to be at a particular disadvantage for marketing assistance. And I think it makes sense that we are not going to do facade improvements for buildings that are not strictly businesses, but I'm glad that we're not going to be cutting residential business owners entirely out of this program.
Right. I think it's a good way to include them too. Yeah, we couldn't do the facade program because the state law doesn't allow you to use TIF funds for residential purposes at all, but I think when you know it's clearly going towards a business piece, you know, it's not, it has nothing to do with where they live, so that's a good part.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Our eighth order of business is council workshop and other business. Our first item is discuss CATV proposed contract and certificate of insurance.
So what's in your packet is what was provided to me by CATV. You did not have in your packet a copy of their certificate of insurance, but we did receive that on Monday, so it's all there. We did finally receive that piece, which is good. And then the contract that you have is what they have drafted, so to start that conversation.
My packet is missing, and since I did everybody else, is this possible?
Yeah.
Is anybody finding it?
I have it today, but I thought it was just mine.
It's not in there.
I have one here.
My apologies.
Somebody wants to look at it.
It's the same as what was emailed? My apologies.
All right.
All right, I have read it.
I just want to start by thanking CATV for presenting a draft, and like all contract negotiations, that's actually one of the biggest hurdles, is actually getting something in writing in front of people to look at.
You have it, okay.
I do not have it.
I would propose that we appoint Michelle, the chairman, if he's willing to do it, to meet with the CATV board and see what can be done in, I'd say, refining this contract and working from there. I mean, I think that contract negotiations are one of those things that are probably best done when the parties negotiating the contract don't have to do it in the open and give up their business and strategic advantages in that. And, you know, just like we negotiate any other contract between the town and the service provider, we get the wording hammered out, and then we bring it back to the council for final approval and making it public. So I think that that would be what I propose, is that Mr. Taylor and the town manager sit down and see what they can, what they can come up with on this.
Great idea, if you guys are agreeable.
Apparently my options are limited here, so.
Well, I am, I'm simply proposing you, you can suggest somebody else.
I wasn't planning on getting backed into a corner.
You're on tape.
I'm on tape, that's fine. I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much, chairman.
I would volunteer, but having been very busy for just a board member, I feel like it'd be better to, to have somebody who's got a sort of fresh start on it.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's good.
No, that's fine. I didn't think it would be right if I didn't give you somewhat of a hard time on this. All right, well, in that case, for purposes of continuing on with the negotiation on this, I believe we should have a vote on this to see if the council would approve us going forward with...
You don't?
Contract negotiations don't...
Yeah, that's true.
You'll have to vote when we come back.
When we come back with the agreement.
So you're all good. You're backed in the corner, so it's all set.
I'm back in the corner, okay.
Okay. Good.
So is the consensus of the council, then? All right?
Yes.
When I paint people in the corners, I always make sure to put down two coats.
Very good, thank you.
Oh, gosh.
Nice.
That was slick, you know that?
That was, that was quick, too.
So I will recount to Laura and CATV so that we can get some dates together for...
Dates together for negotiations on that. Perfect.
Good. Very good. Excuse me.
Laura, you did have the right to speak on this. Are you good at this time then?
At this point, sure.
Okay, thank you.
I just don't know if I would go in there.
Okay. Thank you.
We would have liked to have had you speak.
I'm sorry?
I said, "We would have liked to have had you speak if you wanted to."
I'm not busy about it.
No. Okay.
If I have to.
You do not have to this evening.
No, you don't.
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, let's see, moving on to number two, discuss the Somerset County Rural Cultural Plan. Something that was provided on, well, not really short notice, but...
Somewhat.
Somewhat short notice.
Hey, it was technically planned, yeah?
That's true.
Yeah, there we go.
Having briefly read through some of this...
Arts, culture, recreation, and so forth, right?
I personally do not see anything wrong with an organization that is promoting arts and...
Culture.
Culture in our area.
Sounds good.
Every, every community should have a certain amount of that. Those are my thoughts on that. The rest of you, I'm not sure where you stand on it, but I'm...
Well, I'm an artist, so I mean, you know where I'm going to be going heading towards if that's...
You're opposed to it vehemently, I think. Yes.
I'm not personally an artist because my hands can't do what my brain sees, but I love to look at other people's art, and I love to learn about other cultures, so I don't really have a problem with whatever it is they plan on doing, because it sounds good to me.
My only question is, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to say I'm here to oppose the arts. The, I did not get a sense of what they are looking for in terms of buy-in. Like, do they just want us to say we support this endeavor, or...
They're looking for, basically, they're just looking for support.
Okay.
There's no...
No money, is there?
No money involved at this point.
Nope. I'm not closed to the idea that we would even financially support it, but we did just put together a budget, and we held everyone to pretty strict timelines on that, so as long as there's no money going into it, I think we should go ahead and support it.
I think especially since they apparently gathered data for a while and found out that this is something people want. It might be good for our downtown area where we just lost a business. Maybe we could put something in to attract people to, and maybe it'll at least make us have one less taxless property.
There's many artists in the area, many, Waterville, Fairfield, you name it, there's a lot, and if they had something in that realm, there would be a lot of artists, people that would come to Fairfield for that. I can almost guarantee you that.
Well, I would imagine, because, I mean, just look at the people who like to do art and enter it into fairs. They follow the circuit sometimes, and...
I used to, on my own.
You still haven't showed me any of your art. You said you were going to.
I will, and I will do that.
Hitting on a key point that you brought up there, Erin, there's a short paragraph out of here. Endorsing the plan doesn't obligate the municipality to take action or invest money in implementation efforts. Your acknowledgement is simply a gesture of support. If your municipality adopts or endorses a plan, have access to the 32-page cultural plan and supporting data for use when preparing funding proposals and grant applications.
Excuse me.
So a big portion of them putting this out when they did was, some folks, they were asking to actually to have it approved at a town meeting, based on Fairfield's charter, because it doesn't have anything to do with our annual operating budget, it's not anything that needs to go to town meeting, so it's something the council can simply vote to endorse. Wouldn't necessarily suggest that we open up our strategic plan and try to morph it into that, but I do think as an item itself, it's a good piece for us, as well as the benefits of coming, knowing that an entire region is endorsing one plan will help the region if you're filing for grants, every individual municipality. If it's a plan that the region is looking at and this conforms to the regional plan, it helps you a lot, actually, with grant applications.
Are they looking for a particular piece of land, a building?
No, they're not looking for anything in particular, other than the fact that this is just a plan for the region itself to enhance it. So oftentimes what has happened is, through their research that they've done in the last 18 months, a lot of it is, of course, Somerset County has been hit relatively hard because we were a large manufacturing county, and with those manufacturing job losses, you have the downturn in the economy. Well, what they have found is that by folks who lose their job due to downsizing have a tendency to think outside of the box and do things that are more craft or art inclined or agriculturally inclined to supplement their income. So by continuing this, this they see as the route towards a better prosperity for the county in general, and this has been a proven approach. So this is why they've done this undertaking.
So, I mean, I think that we, we should approve this as a council, you know, just resolve that we support this plan. I actually would not be opposed to some sort of non-binding survey at the town meeting to get people to know that this exists, maybe have somebody from this organization give the elevator speech as to what it is and why we're putting support behind it, and maybe get a show of public support as well.
We could certainly reach out to them and see if they wanted to do a small presentation at the town meeting, or at least know that they're here with their information and that can stop you.
Yeah, they did mention that in there, in the email that went out, that they would provide, someone could come and talk.
The other component is keeping it separate from the strategic plan or comprehensive plan, but still go into our economic page on the website, be a link, something that folks can, you know, access quite easily. And I'd just certainly put on as an action item for that meeting.
Oh, wait, action item? Next, action item, next meeting. Any further discussion on... Any further discussion on number two? Moving on to number three. Discuss other council business. Courtney?
Um, I wanted to, uh, let all of you guys know that on my own personal time, I went and spoke with the director of the library, and we, uh, decided together that I'm going to volunteer my time, and she's going to volunteer some of her space, and we're going to start a seed library there so that people who, uh, are interested in gardening, but they don't necessarily have the know-how of how to do it, or they don't have a way to get to Johnny's, can go to the library and take out seed packets and, um, get little brochures of, you know, the different types of plants and the families and how they interact together in crop rotation, so that people can start growing some of their own food.
Very good. Nice. Thank you.
Good.
Fairly?
Hmm, no, nothing tonight.
John?
Uh, the only thing that looks like possibly tomorrow, we will have some information on our pot bill down in Augusta, and the, I think the biggest thing for the towns right now, from what I have gathered, what was heard and stuff, is, is that, because there's so, so much stuff going out, is, is that towns, the way that the bill is written, towns will have to opt in to allowing marijuana, so if they don't do anything, it's not going to be allowed. They will have to opt in. So that's, I think that's a biggie. There, there's, there is several other things that are going to be, you know, will be on the floor and heard and amendments and whatever, so, but that would be the biggest, to me, the biggest thing that, uh, would be helpful for all our towns.
So then if it goes in that way, would that just be like a question on town meeting or something? That you have to...
Would it be close to a monody?
No, I, I would think it would be, uh, town council.
Depends on how they...
Yeah, it depends upon, yeah.
Because even the liquor laws required in town, it is not, I don't believe, allowed to be approved at council level. I think it's specifically written that it has to be the municipal body. I think, I, I could be, don't hold me to it, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I would imagine that it would be written that way, because...
It depends on how they write it. It really does depend on how they write it.
It must at some levels, will depend on how the town is constituted, because there are definitely towns that do not vest certain powers in their meeting.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, there are towns that don't have town co, that don't have town meetings.
It depends on how they, they word the amendment change.
Yeah.
So...
Well, we'll see what it is.
But it sounds very similar to what they did with alcohol after prohibition. You had to vote, even though the state was able to sell alcohol, municipalities still had to vote in order to sell it within the boards of their municipalities.
And liquor licenses.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's still an awful lot of dry towns out there.
Yes, there is. Erin?
Um, the only thing I have is that next Wednesday will be the, uh, first meeting for the county budget committee. It's at, uh, six o'clock, uh, at the county building. If anybody has any interest in how that part of, uh, the budget process is going to play out, they should probably, uh, go and attend those meetings, and I am Fairfield's representative for that committee, so if anybody has any questions or concerns, uh, feel free to contact me. I would point out that although it's not a huge piece of your property tax bill, it is there, and it affects it. It's a big piece, and it's, it is significant.
And I think, I think I am going to, uh, reserve comments on a few things this evening, and leave it at, "I am all set." So with that, the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be Wednesday, March fourteenth, twenty-eighteen. At this time, council will recess and sign all documents that require signatures of council members.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. We're in recess.